Welcome to our meeting. The date is August 27, 2024. The time is 7:00 PM. This is an open meeting of the Grand Island City Council. The city of Grand Island abides by the Open Meetings Act in conducting business. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is displayed in the back of this room as required by state law. The city council may vote to go into closed session on any agenda item as allowed by state law. I now ask that you stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The city clerk will now perform roll call.
Councilmember Mendoza will be absent. Councilmember Kozinski will be absent. Councilmember Hazy will be absent. Councilmember Sheard?
I'm here.
Councilmember Pollock?
Present.
Councilmember Fitzki?
Present.
Council President Stelk?
Present.
Councilmember Nickerson?
Present.
Councilmember Lanfair?
Here.
Councilmember Conley?
Present.
And Mayor Steele.
Present. Also present are Jill Grenier, the city clerk, Laura McAlune, the city administrator, Patrick Brown, the assistant city administrator, chief financial officer, Carrie Fisk, the city attorney, Keith Kurtz, the public works director, and Matthew Gleason, the finance director. Individuals who have appropriate items for city council consideration should complete the request for future agenda items form located at the information booth. If the issue can be handled administratively without council action, notification will be provided. If the item is scheduled for a meeting or study session, notification of the date will be given. I understand Mr. Nickerson wishes to poll consent agenda item 6I. Are there any other consent agenda items that council members would like to poll for Hearing none, we will continue. A sign up sheet was available in the lobby for individuals wishing to provide input on any of tonight's agenda items. If you did not sign up to speak on an agenda item, please come forward, state your name and the agenda topic on which you will be speaking. We will continue, but before we start our agenda, I would like to take a moment to reflect on the importance of keeping our city clean and well-maintained, not just for ourselves, but for the many visitors we welcome every year to the Nebraska State Fair. This is an event that brings thousands of people to Grand Island, and their impressions are shaped by what they see as they walk our streets, visit our parks, and enjoy our local businesses. A clean and attractive streetscape does more than make a good impression; it fosters a sense of community pride. When our streets are free of litter, public spaces are well-maintained and cared for, and our neighborhoods are vibrant and thriving, it sends a powerful message. It shows that we care about our city, we care about each other, and we care about the future we are building together. A cleaner community encourages engagement, supports local businesses, and can even influence people's decisions when they are considering where to live, work, and raise a family. Grand Island is a place of opportunity and growth, and we want that to be reflected in every corner of our city. I urge each of us to take pride in Grand Island. Whether it's picking up that piece of litter or maintaining our own properties, every small action contributes to the bigger picture. We want our visitors to leave with memories of a city that is not only welcoming and vibrant, but also clean and cared for. This is our home, and it's up to each and every one of us to make sure we're putting our best foot forward. So let's get out and keep our city clean and beautiful for others to enjoy, along with our own enjoyment. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items 6A through 6S, with the exception Mrs. Fitzki?
Thank you, Mayor. I would move to approve the consent agenda with the removal of "I."
Thank you. Mr. Lanfair?
I second.
Thank you, and it's nice to see you again, Mr. Lanfair.
Nice to be here.
Any discussion?
Motion adopted.
We will take up consent agenda item 6I, Field Training Contract between the Grand Island Fire Department and Panhandle EMS Training. Chief Schmitz, good evening.
Good evening. I'm here to answer any questions about item 6I.
Why don't you just give us a brief overview of what it is?
Sure. The Grand Island Fire Department, obviously, we're a premier service, at least in my eyes, and part of that service is to train other paramedics. And paramedic students and EMT students have to do a certain amount of ride time to get exposure to taking care of patients in the emergency realm. We have several contracts with other agencies, and it allows those students to come get that experience. But better yet, selfishly speaking, we use it for a recruitment tool. We bring in these students, and we teach them how to become a better EMT or paramedic, and we also try and recruit them, and it's been pretty successful over the past years. As far as the number of contracts, I'd have to defer to Russ in the hours, but Russ, do you have anything to add?
Besides the one we're asking you to approve tonight, we have contracts with 10 colleges and universities that we accept students from for both EMTs and paramedics. And he said various hours. The EMT has to put in 10 clinical hours over, or yeah, 10 clinical hours and at least five patient contacts. The AEMT, which I don't have an answer to because that's the contract you're approving tonight, so we've not really done any of those, but even at the paramedic level, they do 620 clinical hours out in the field to get their certification.
Thank you. Council members, is there a motion? Mr. Nickerson?
I make a motion we approve 2024-187.
Mr. Sheard?
Thank you. I'll second that.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Nickerson?
Yeah, I just wanted you to share that a little bit tonight, and I don't know how often this happens, but it just sounds like a good program that you all are involved in in helping educate and give people experience in the field that you're helping them with. And how often do you do this in the course of a year? Is this something that happens, yes, the students?
Almost daily.
Is that right?
Between the 10 colleges.
No kidding? I had no idea.
Most of the colleges run two EMT sessions a year and two paramedic sessions, and they pretty much put out clinical hours all year long.
Wow. Excellent. Well, I just thought it was something worth sharing because I just haven't really paid much attention to that in the past, but it's also a potential recruiting tool, you said. So why not take advantage of that? All right.
Please vote. Motion adopted.
We will continue with our public hearings. 7A, Public Hearing Request from Peacock Lounge, 2430 North Broadwell Avenue for a Class C Liquor License. Mrs. Grenier?
An application for a Class C liquor license was filed with the Liquor Control Commission and received by the city on July 21, 2024. A notice to general public of date, time, and place of hearing was published on August 17. Along with a notice to applicant of date, time, and place of hearing was mailed on July 31, 2024 with chapters, Chapter 4 City Code, Alcoholic Beverages. Departmental reports were received as required by City Code, and recommendation is to approve upon final inspection. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this item? If not, public hearing is now closed.
Council, the action item on the request from Peacock Lounge is Resolution 2024-198. Is there a motion? Mr. Lanfair?
I move that we approve item 2024-198.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Conley?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
Resolution 8A, Consideration of Approving Fiscal Year 2024-2025 Annual Budget for Foner Park Business Improvement District and Setting Date for Board of Equalization. Mr. Gleason, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. So this is the Foner Park Business Improvement District, the 2024-2025 budgets, or fiscal year 25. Again, I'll speak to it from what I know of it. So we have on the left column there, well, the second to the left column is the 2324 budget that was put forth. In Foner Park, sorry, it's got an extra K there, so I just noticed that. Foner Park BID, unlike some of the other BIDs that are valuation-based, this one is actually based on front footage, so how many feet of on the street they are. And so the budget for last year was 1075 of a square fo, oh, not a square foot, 1075 for front footage, and that's going to be the same for the projected and the proposed 25. The budgeted revenue, because they're keeping it the same, would be that same, 53,0202. So they're trying to stay flat, 0% growth. Planned carryover, and then the special assessments from that line above, and then the interest. So basically, this year's budget to the projected, same carryover, special assessment. We found out last time that they don't always get every dollar that they're assessing, so those do get turned over to collections, but, so they're a little bit short there. But then the interest rates are much better than they thought they were going to get, 250, and they've got 905. So that gives them their, the revenue. And then appropriations, the contract services is mostly a business that does landscaping and, you know, stuff like that, keeping everything looking good. We've got some other things. They were under with some of them, the repair and maintenance and the snow and ice removal. And so the expenses are less than what they had budgeted. So they were going to have an annual excess of 801, but we think they'll have an annual excess of 3768, and then that'll roll forward to next year's budget. Same amount of revenue, going kind of back to the interest revenue because the feds are going to start lowering that, so we don't know. The 50,000 is a new item this year. We just had the meeting last Wednesday, I think, and they were thinking that perhaps they could look for some grant funding to be able to do some things on their, for their streetscapes and all that. So we just put a number in here, 50,000 for revenue, and then it's the same 50,000 down here for other expenditures. So it's just kind of an in and an out because you have to have the authority to be able to spend the money, and if they don't get it, then they don't get it or whatever. But they're trying to, the mulch is just kind of like, it blows out, and it's kind of not, and they gotta replace it all the time, and they've got more with the weeds and herbicide and all that sort of stuff. So they're trying to get it to where they can put in like River Rock or something that would be kind of a permanent. It's more expensive upfront, but then it'll last and look really nice for a long time. And then here, and again, that contract services was, again, the business that does that for them, that takes care of all the landscaping and keeping it beautiful. We went back to some of the, you know, up a little bit for, we basically kind of mirrored the 23, about 2324 budget, so we went back up to those just in case for repairs and maintenance because sometimes the sprinkler heads are getting hit and all that sort of stuff, so doing that. And I'm just trying to, so they'll end with an annual excess hopefully of $2,060. That's what I know. I'll open it up for any questions or comments or concerns or...
First, I'm going to ask for a motion.
Oh, sorry.
Counsel, thank you, by the way, for your presentation. Council members, do you have a motion regarding Resolution 2024-199? Mr. Sheard?
Thank you. I move that we pass Resolution 2024-199.
Thank you. And Mrs. Fitzki?
I would second that.
Thank you. And now, discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
And thank you, Mr. Gleason.
Thank you.
The next item is Resolution 8B, Approving Fiscal Year 2024-2025 Fee Schedule. Again, Mr. Gleason.
Thank you, sir. So you all have this in your packet. It's 14 pages long, so when put into a PDF, same thing here, it's just in Excel, so we printed it to a PDF to make it easier. We've got the 22 column, the 23 column, 24, and then the 25 is the proposed. All the stuff in red is the differences, so the first one is, so we're not going to go through line by line because that would take crazy amount of time. So we'll, I know there's some interest in the redevelopment plan adoption amendment and Mr. Chad Nabbity was, would come up to speak to that a little bit, or do we, do we need a motion, or how's this word?
Why don't you finish your presentation?
Okay.
They know I'm here for questions.
Okay. So we'll just run through it real quick, and then if there's questions later, I know there's some questions, so the redevelopment plan is kind of more of a tiered look versus just the flat fee for that. The library, free on the charges, interlibrary loan is going to go up a little bit. The big thing there, I know, will be a discussion later, is there's, for the first time, meeting room rental rates for the different rooms that they have in the library. And I think there should be someone here from the library. I know the library director's not able to be here, but I think she has a representative for those questions. The cemetery division, looks like it has quite a bit of changes, and these are all under Parks and Recreation, and I believe Todd McCoy will be here if you have questions about those. But, so the cemetery, it looks like we're going up a little bit, and most of it, there's a private columbarium internment is a new one. Now we're to the volleyball program, Recreation Division Volleyball Program. Got some changes on some fields. Aquatics, some changes at the pool, season passes, water park. Looks like water park, not so much the fees that are changing, but maybe the descriptions over here. The golf course from Landscapes Golf Management. I know we have Sedona here, so if she needs to speak to this, but it looks like those are going up a little bit, just, I'm sure, stay with inflation and all the things, so we've got those quite a bit. Gart rent, cart rental. The Heartland Public Shooting Park, all these lines came out because their operating agreement is different than like the golf one, the golf one, the way we did that operating agreement was you all have the ability to set the prices and stuff. But the Heartland Public Shooting Park, we kind of did a different operating agreement with them where they're able to set the prices for the market, so they know, you know, what's, or if they need to change midway or all that sort of stuff. So theirs is basically, since Hornaday took over, theirs is just removing all of these fees, but it's not free because I thought, oh, maybe it's all free now. It's not free, it's just they will be doing that. The Stolly Park Train, looks like we got some changes. Community Field House rentals. Batting Cage, just a lot of, as we saw last time, Parks and Rec has a lot of, a lot of stuff under its purview. The planning and zoning, we changed some stuff there, up about 50 bucks. Down here, 10 bucks, 25 bucks, just kind of going up a little bit, 50 bucks. And then we're removing some of these, and again, I'm hoping Mr. Chad Nabbity could help if you guys have questions about that. Some of the GIS electronic publications, we're removing those fees. Same thing for floodplain, letter of map interpretation. These are all the same. Oh, the sewage sewer service charge, and I'm sure Mr. Keith Kirsch could speak to this, but unlike the electric and the water that you have to do a certain way, this is in the, in the fee schedule here, so the customer service charge went up a little bit, just everything went up a little bit, but I'm sure he would be able to speak to BOD over, you know, some of these things. Yeah, this is all still sewer. Oh, here's the landfill, had some changes, little bit up. Transfer station, little bit up. The compost site, then the utility service fees. These are what, the electric city dividend rate and the water city dividend rate that you guys put into effect when you were voting on those. And then we're taking out this backflow processing fee. Looks like we're going up a little bit there. What are we talking about here? Utility services. So there's, these are changes too, so valve operation for flushing testing water service is larger than two inches, not requiring sampling. Okay, so I'm guessing, is this sewage still, or is this? Looks like they're going up a little bit. So that's the initial presentation, but like I said, I have some people here to help me to get you guys better answers, or I'll try to find an answer for you.
Thank you, Mr. Gleason. Is there a motion regarding Resolution 2024-200? Mr. Sheard?
Thank you. I move that we pass Resolution 2024-200.
Thank you. Mr. Lanfair?
I second.
Thank you. Discussion? Mr. Nickerson?
Thank you, Matt, for sharing those fees. Most of them are typically incremental increases, which we see, but the ones that did pique my interest are a couple that you've talked about. And when we get to the library, I need to just make sure that it's okay, since we have a library rep, that I can ask him to come up, or the mayor will ask him to come up under the new rules?
Please represent if you have a question.
Okay, so it's all okay to do that?
Yes.
Okay. Good. Okay. Just making sure we're playing by the right rules, whatever they are nowadays. Anyway, since this is up, Chad, why don't you come up? I know you and I've had a conversation before, and I will just share with the council my concerns and more questions than concerns. And there are some concerns. You know, when we see everything up there, it's been added except for the initial, was it, well, it was 1,100 at one point.
Correct.
You had to increase that to 1,500. Then we added a bunch of layers after that, little stair step things that end up to $10,000 for some of these, and that's...
You're right.
That's what I'm looking for. What is the logic behind it?
I stood here probably seven, eight months ago and mentioned that Wood River, or not Wood River, but North Platte charges $5,000 for an application, and several council members and the mayor reached out to me and said, what do you mean they're charging $5,000 for every application? And what are we charging? Good questions. So what we're doing is taking a different approach. My personal and professional opinion is that if you are doing a smaller project that's under that $500,000 worth of TIF, $5,000 is a big, starts to get to be a pretty big percentage of what you're asking for, and that may be impacting your ability to do the project. So if we scale this and we stair step it based on the size of the project and how much money they're asking for, is it, is it maybe just a little bit of socialism that the people at the top are paying to help subsidize the people at the bottom? Yes, it is. I have talked to our developers that are doing these big projects, and while none of them are thrilled about an increase in cost, they all understand it, and they all understand that there are expenses that the city has long-term going into these projects because we are tracking them from the time they start until that project is done. And so for the city, it's pretty much a 20-year commitment to a given project, and that's if it's a 15-year TIF from start to finish. So that's really the, it's up to council. You've set the policy, and we have, in the past, these numbers, the 1,100 was originally set because that's what it cost us to run the advertisements when we had to publish maps. That was, that was a direct expense from the city clerk's budget, and all this did was reimburse that direct expense. This is recouping a little bit of the expense and putting the burden to pay for it on the applicant.
Based on what, based on what you said, who's charging 5,000?
North Platte.
North Platte.
On any TIF application.
Any TIF. Any idea how we compare it to other folks besides North Platte?
I know Omaha ends up collecting on the back end a percentage of the TIF, and they actually pay for, I think, two and a half employees full-time based on the TIF that they do. So there are other ways to do this, but the, this would be consistent with what we've done in the past and also expand it. At this point, with the TIF projects that have been approved since last October, there were six of them that would have paid $10,000. There are two that would have paid 1,500. You've also adopted the micro TIF program, which means that those really small projects that are one, that are specific to a single property, pay a $50 fee that is set by statute. The legislature set that, we don't get to, we don't get to mess with that, but it gives some options for those smaller projects and then ramping up.
Okay. I'd just like to understand the logic behind the numbers, and I guess I can't argue with it. I just think we're all feed to death so many times, but if there's a reason for the fees, I'm okay with that. And according to what you're saying, compared to North Platte, someone's still getting a bargain at up to $3 million here.
Right.
So we're still underneath some of our...
Competitors.
I don't know, we'd call them peer, but, yeah, so it's still...
Peer cities.
Peer cities. So it's, it's still a bargain, if you want to call it that, and you are increasing your baseline anyway, up $400, and I would perfectly understand that. But I just thought it's a good thing to talk about and understand because this is no small fee increase here when you look at it.
Exactly.
Okay.
And it is something that councils should be very aware of, that this change is being made, and I appreciate the opportunity to come explain it.
Good. All righty. Thanks. So let's, let's shift gears then. Matt, if you want to bring up the rentals for our library, and I know we have Sean here, and I know you're excited, Sean, about coming up here to represent the library, but I just wanted to know a little bit of history because all I see, all we see as a council member are numbers on a fee schedule, but we don't know the story behind all of them. I'd just kind of like to know the story behind this one.
Mr. Cleese, please state your name.
Sean Cleese.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'm the Reverend's Collection Services Librarian. Celine's out on medical leave. I'm in charge while she's on leave of the library. Our meeting rooms, the library's offered meeting rooms for use for nonprofit and governmental use for many, many, many years. This change is actually, the fees actually apply just to for-profit use. Currently, for-profit businesses are not allowed to book the meeting rooms under our current meeting room policy, so after discussion with our library board and our library co- room policy. So after discussion with our library board and our library council and looking at library services, which we've tried to modernize and bring into line with other libraries, such as removing overdue fines and fees, which we've done a couple years ago. We looked at other libraries, and most libraries allow the for-profit use of the meeting rooms at an hourly fee.
Okay. And you say prior to this, they were not allowed to do that?
Yeah, correct. Currently, only nonprofit and governmental use of the meeting rooms is allowed.
Okay. And based on any interest you've seen in the past, do you think this is going to be a popular thing for some of those folks?
I, yes, we believe so. We get, on average, a handful of calls a week from businesses that are looking to use the meeting rooms for either training sessions for their staff or other sorts of things like that. So we feel that this would, this would help provide a space in Grand Island, which there really isn't many spaces for meetings like that to occur. And it would also help offset any revenue lost from the overdue fines, which wasn't that much to begin with.
When you do have some very nice meeting rooms, especially that one big one, I don't know what they're called, but you've got a very nice, large meeting room that gets used quite a bit. A lot of times, the nonprofits use just a small section of that, you know, because it's so big, but they only need so much room. Do you see any conflicts with the amount of use that it gets now that to where the, these folks come in and want to dominate it and not allow the nonprofits to use it, or is that just in your ability to schedule that?
We do have, that's built into our calendar system that we have. The library board has also put in to their policy that a for-profit group that's paying the rental fees would only be able to book for up to four hours per day and only once per quarter. So that would help keep individual business from, say, coming in and using a space every week or every three days or whatever.
Very good. Sounds like a lot of thought has gone into it then. So it's very good. Well, it was just, it's again one of those things that you don't see the narrative behind the fees, and I appreciate you coming and sharing that with me today. Okay, thank you, Sean. I do have one more question, and this is just going to be a general question that we may or may not know because we just talked about the Heartland Shooting Park and any, and the fee changes. Do we know if they've made many adjustments, or they, were we on track with our fee schedule? That it was decent, or do we know anything about that in particular? It's just a question just out of curiosity. Have they gone up in price, down in price, or they, were we right where we needed to be?
I have not had a discussion with their upcoming fee. I know that they kept the fees the same when they initially took over. Haven't really had a discussion. And Matt kind of mentioned it, it's, it's a little bit of a different situation, whereas the revenue that's generated at the golf course is actually city revenue, and the, all the expenses and all the revenue is from the Hornaday Management Company. So we don't have that information.
Just curious, I didn't know if we were right where we wanted to be, if they see some advantages to increasing that a little bit or not.
I will say this, I have received no complaints so far.
There you go. Okay, super. All righty, well, that's all the questions I had on the fee schedule, and thank you for sharing that today.
Please vote.
Ordinance 9A, we do not have enough members to suspend the statutory rules regarding ordinances. So 9A will be on second reading. It is number 9982, consideration of vacation of a portion of easement in Stewart Place subdivision 2104 and 2120 South Blaine Street. This is on second reading. Mr. Kurtz?
Good evening. So, second reading, some of you have heard this before, but we had a request to, from one of the property owners here on Stewart Place subdivision, to apply for a license agreement so that they could build a garage in their backyard. Kind of looked at it. That easement back there was dedicated long, long ago, and the lot lines at that time are a little different than they are today. We reached out to all the utility companies. Nobody has anything in this easement. Nobody needed this easement for anything in the future. So we are proposing to vacate that easement such that they could go ahead with their building plans.
Thank you. And is there a motion? Mrs. Fitzke?
Thank you, Mayor. I would make a motion to approve the ordinance 9982.
And Mr. Stelt?
I second the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks to both of you. Any discussion?
All right. Ordinance number 9982, an ordinance to vacate a portion of an existing easement and to provide for filing this ordinance in the Office of Register of Deeds of Hall County, Nebraska, to repeal any ordinance of parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and to provide for publication the effective date of this ordinance. Please vote. Motion adopted.
The last item on our regular agenda is 10A, executive session to discuss collective bargaining and the protection of the public interest. Is there a motion to go into executive session? Mr. Sheard?
I move we go into executive session.
Thank you. And Mr. Lanfair?
I second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Please vote. Motion adopted.
We are going into executive session at 7:36 PM.